Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, we have a call.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ooh, sorry. Okay. Do we, um, oh wait, can you go? That's it. Okay. Do we ask for a motion to approve the Minnesota September 17th, 2018 business meeting and October 1st, 2018 special workshop meeting?
Ah, so moved.
Second. Terrence Schruck?
Terrence Pabst.
Aye.
Charles Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicklaus.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't at one of the meetings.
Ruth Cavnado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Dampf.
Aye.
And Nancy Cooper. Hi, Mr. Harris. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. The second is for audience members to address the board at any topic for today. Anybody who should address the board? There are none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports and superintendent higher education legislation.
Hi. Good evening. I'm going to invite Senator McGuire to address the board. He recently came and met with a group of our counselors to discuss some of the work he's doing around the higher education working group, and he asked to address the board about some of those items.
Thank you. Madam President, Board Members, thank you very having me speak to you this evening. I'm Pat McGuire, I'm state senator, represent Senate District 43, which is Eightwell County Communities and Woodbridge. So I'm here because I represent Woodbridge. And I'm a former school board member, I was on the Joliet Township High School Board for 12 years, so I commend you for your public service. I'm here to say that the General Assembly, like you, wants Illinois higher education to be affordable, stable, and of high quality. So it was about 13 months ago that four of us legislators met and decided to ask our caucus leaders to appoint members to a higher education working group. So we have standing committees, I chair the Senate Higher Ed Committee, but in committee, of course, we hear bills. And we wanted to frankly have more time to learn more about the state of higher education in Illinois. And so each of the caucus leaders appointed three members of his caucus, which means we have six Democrats, six Republicans, six senators, six House members. And we began meeting last November, and we first heard from ICCB and ISAC and IBHGE. Then we heard from all kinds of organizations, including the president of the Illinois High School Counselors Association, whose name I can't remember, teaches at HF. And then we asked all 12 of our public university campuses to make a presentation to us, and frankly, we told them, don't send the president or the chancellor. We want to hear from the director of enrollment, the director of financial aid. And those presentations informed the package of bills that we then brought forth late in the session in May. Specifically, a number of universities, principally the University of Illinois, told us that while their traditional competitors, their top 10 competitors were Big Ten schools, now, of course, they're Big Ten schools and SEC schools because of the, you know, much noted exodus of students, not just Iowa and Indiana, but Alabama, for instance. So that didn't surprise us, but then what more than surprised us shocked us was when the leaders of three schools, Governor State, Northeastern, and Northern, told us our biggest competitor is nowhere. And we didn't know what they meant. And Elaine Mayman, the president of Governor State, told us that last year 33 percent of the students that Governor State admitted didn't matriculate to any college. They didn't go to Governors', they didn't go to Moraine', they didn't go to St. Xavier'. It was a, I think the figure at Northeastern was in the low 20s, and the figure at NIU was in the high teens. So then we tailored our work to try to assist those two groups of students. Again, we wanted to make college more affordable in Illinois, and we also wanted to inject whatever stability we could into the entire system and also aid degree attainment. So we had a package of six bills, well, five bills in one resolution. We passed four of the bills, the governor signed all four of them this summer, and two of them address affordability. So the first bill is called AIM High, and frankly...
Tony, can you pull up the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, I'm just going to put it up on the screen.
Oh, thanks for doing this. This is what we have. Yeah, we got it, right? Oh, okay, you already got it.
Yeah, it was...
Oh, this is a new one.
Oh, this is a new one.
This has a little more information on it, yeah.
Okay.
So, here in short, here's what we did. So to aid that, let's start with our biggest competitor is nowhere group. So those are students, we think, who are eligible for MAP grants, you know, the State's Need-Based Aid Program, Monetary Award Program. Well, MAP has never had a greater appropriation than it does now, 401 million. But even at that, only half of the students who qualify for MAP get it, because we run out of money. So that might explain, like, 33 percent of the students admitted to Governors', not going to any college, and you probably know that the academic term for that is summer melt. So what we did is, we wanted to guarantee MAP for four years, that if a student received MAP his or her first year, then the student would be guaranteed getting it years two, three, and four. But of course, the conscientious leaders at ISAC reminded us that MAP is subject to an annual appropriation, and given the ways of legislators, we can't guarantee anything. So it's now priority access. So truly, a student who gets MAP year one will have priority on getting MAP years two, three, and four. Again, to try and provide some stability, some assurance to those students from families that essentially have a zero EFC, Expected Family Contribution. And then for the other group of students, we created the AIM High program. And this is the only bill we passed, the only new law, which is a new expenditure of state money. So, thank you. We created a $25 million fund, this is a five-year pilot. And this is to incentivize our public universities to give more of their own money. So some people call it merit aid, I call it institutional match. So this is the base year, and beginning next year, well, this $25 million fund is allocated based on full-time enrollment. So U of C, for instance, gets, I think, almost $4 million. Chicago State gets $400,000 because of the differing enrollments, right? And so each school can use that money to provide additional institutional aid to students based on criteria it sets. So I didn't want to establish a statewide criteria for merit aid, we wanted to leave it up to each individual school. So if you've seen the news stories, UIC last week announced a program, I think it's called the Chancellor's Scholarship, something like that. Eastern has announced something with its own criteria, Western has announced something with its own criteria. So again, for every additional dollar that our nine public universities give in institutional aid, they get a buck from the state. And the good news about this for families, you know, just above the MAP eligibility range, so to speak, is that a family is eligible, a student is eligible if his or her family income is no greater than six times the federal poverty level. For a family of four, that's $150,000. So we hope that this program will help those families who, you know, make a little too much to be eligible for need-based aid, but certainly don't have an extra $30,000 sitting around to send their son or daughter to college. And then the third bill I'd like to highlight is that, well, it's not up there right now, but it might be at the top, Hank. So it's reverse transfer. So say a student goes to College of DuPage, earns 30 hours, and then transfers to Northern. Upon satisfying COD's graduation requirements while at Northern, he or she gets a degree from COD. So then even if the student ever earns a baccalaureate degree from, in this case, Northern, he or she still has a post-secondary credential. So we base that on a Missouri law. So our chores for this year, we're still meeting, we recently had our, I think it was our 19th meeting, is to spread the word about these bills that we passed, again, to inject stability into Illinois' higher education system and make our schools more affordable. And this will be no small challenge. We're trying to develop a base funding formula, so I'm sure you're all familiar with the base funding formula that we adopted for K through 12. Well, the way we appropriate to our public universities would be kindly described as And so we have performance funding, but it's one-half of 1 percent. So for, obviously, 99.5 percent of the money that we give to the universities, it's not based on degree attainment, it's retention, or anything like that. So we're getting information from other states and seeing how they do this, those states that do have a base funding formula. And frankly, this could be, this could be a row, because Illinois State, for instance, might prefer to us to have a base funding formula with maybe one element, graduation rate, right? Which schools that serve perhaps a greater number of under-resourced students, Northeastern, Chicago State, they're not going to go for that. No. But again, we have some good models from other states that we're going to examine. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
One, thank you.
Thank you, Senator McGuire. When the Senator came out and talked to our counseling staff, they really focused in on the two that the Senator led with, the AIM High and MAP renewal prioritization, as what they felt were the two pieces of legislation that would make the biggest difference for our students and for students in Illinois. So they were very appreciative of that work.
They taught me, too.
Well, good.
They did.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to say thank you, Senator.
You're welcome.
You represent me, because I live in Woodbridge. I have two girls in college, so thank you again. And you had to work on their family of four thing.
Pardon me? What did...
You got to work on their family of four thing.
Yeah.
Tell them I'm single parents.
Okay, all right, all right. So honestly, if you have any suggestions, get ahold of me, because...
I will.
We know this, we're not going to... In the 90s, Illinois' higher education system was ranked the best in the country.
No. It's not now.
Yeah, it's not now.
No. So we have our work cut out for us, and I welcome your suggestions. Okay, thank you.
Has your committee addressed any of the dual-credit legislation that's been recently passed?
No, that's actually, there's a considerable bill about that that's going to be in the Education Committee, the K through 12 Committee, sponsored by Jennifer Bertino-Tarrant, who chairs that committee.
I mean, if we're talking about affordability of college, you know, I would imagine that dual-credit legislation would make college much more affordable if I'd come in with a full semester of qualification.
Right, that's also one of the surest predictors of degree attainment, is arriving on campus with some credit already in your pocket. Yeah, we need to look at that.
So your work's going to continue?
Oh, yes.
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
I likewise have, I have two in college right now, one more going off this next year, and then another one a couple of years after that, and it's incredibly expensive, especially for people from Illinois, because, I mean, I, it's amazing, I took my daughter to visit a school in Wisconsin, one of their state schools, I mean, I could send her there even without much merit scholarship, it'd be less expensive for me to send her to La Crosse than it would be to send her to Illinois State, which is crazy. And then the people in Wisconsin, their in-state tuition is, I mean, half of that.
Oh, many states are like that.
Yeah.
I hear you, Mike, I did, I saw my son went to Wisconsin Water, didn't go to an Illinois school.
There you go.
Much more affordable.
Yep, yep, and so it's a problem, and we're, I mean, and as a parent, you want, you want the best education for your children that, you know, you can afford.
Right.
And as much as you don't want to have them go away, that a lot of times, that's the best, you know, the best thing, best option you have, but it sure isn't good for the state of Illinois. I mean, we, we're losing intellectual capital like crazy.
Once they leave, they don't...
And it's less chance that they come back, yeah.
Right.
So this is a major, major problem.
Yeah, you probably know that over 10 years ago, the state adopted what's called a, what is it called, Publican, I don't know what it is, Career Agenda or something. Anyway, there's a goal in there of 60 by 2025, that by the year 2025, 60 percent of Illinoisans between 24 and 65 would have a post-secondary credential of some degree. And we started out at a pretty healthy number, because we've traditionally, Illinois has had a greater number of residents with a post-secondary credential than most other states. And we were on the trend line to reach that, 60 by 2025, we've fallen off. And that's an, I mean, I'm an English teacher, so I know there are many non, what's the word, remnumerative benefits of education, but that's an economic goal. I mean, if we're going to be economically competitive, we have to get there, that 60 percent of adults of working age have a post-secondary credential. So we're trying to get back on the line and reach that goal.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Education succeeds, we all succeed.
That's why we're here. We get it.
How's your facility going, Tony?
Several updates for the board. We found out recently that we believe some of our prototype furniture for the other, we have two classrooms in each school that are still waiting for furniture, it may be arriving sooner than we think. So two classroom in each school done already, and then hopefully in the next couple of weeks, there remains.
Yes, my classroom is done.
Yay! You're done?
I have furniture.
Kirk, are you in the one with or without new furniture?
Mine has not had...
Not yet, yeah. Okay, so hopefully very soon. So, and then we'll start gathering feedback from students on that. Community presentations this Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, North High in the auditorium, where we'll be going through what all the designs look like at this point. Some of it's even changed a little bit since we presented to the board on the first, because we've had so many of our small team meetings over the last few weeks, which have gone really, really well. Thursday at noon, I'll be on Facebook Live, so you can have your lunch and have me talk to you, and we'll do the...
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. So you can tune in during lunch and get the same presentation as Wednesday night if you're unable to attend Wednesday, or anytime after that, because it's recorded, so, going on. The main thing to discuss this evening, up for action later tonight, is an action item on construction manager. Before I get into kind of that recommendation, where we're going with that, I just want to recognize Mike and Don for all of the work that they did representing the board on those. They literally each put in, just sitting in meetings over 40 hours, to choose a construction manager, and that doesn't count all the time, reading material outside and preparing for it. So you were well represented by Mike and Don, thank you for all of your time and effort.
Thank you.
For a while, I was starting to wonder if we had to put an office here for two...
We just, we like to get in the payroll.
Not allowed.
Increase your salary.
Double bonus.
I'll take it.
They are double-able.
Good deal, that's true.
Is that IMRA? Fuck with them.
So to review the process, we started out by sending out an all-call request for qualifications, and we received seven qualified responses. All of those responses went to a paper screening process, where the whole committee sat down and reviewed the paper proposals. From that, four companies emerged that came back for, I believe, about an hour, hour and a half, for each one of those. For an interview process, the paper screening was done against a rubric, the first round of interviews was interview-style, and then out of those four, two were named as finalists. They received a time where they had the ability to come in and be presented with the entire scope of the project, they saw that October 1st presentation a week before even the board did, so that they had all the information that we had, so that they could come back for a proposal and presentation. They were given a list of topics that they were to address in that final presentation, and then they came back for another hour and a half presentation time. The committee asked in that final presentation to address specific topics such as budgeting, success in similar projects, strategies that they would use in the construction of our buildings, and remodeling of our buildings, specific contractual language that we would look to have included moving forward, and ultimately, a price that we believed that they could construct the building within, at least a general ballpark. We decided at the end, ultimately, both those finalists could do this project. They were both highly qualified, as the committee been comfortable with either group's building. But emerging out of it on top unanimously out of that committee was White and Company. We're joined here today, Jim and Jason from White, that later on, if you have questions that you'd like to direct at them, feel free. Emerging out of that, for we're based on some key considerations. One is the top fiscal reasons, that White is offering a guaranteed maximum contract similar to what we used for the air conditioning project this last summer. That GMAX contract is right now in the ballpark of 122 million, which is underneath the amount that we have remaining, which means we'll have the ability to add in some scope, we hope, to improve other areas that the board and the administration has identified across the district. Inside of that total cost is a construction management fee of 1.75 percent. Both of those numbers were lower than what we received from other companies.
That's the 1.75 of the one?
1.75, both numbers were lower.
Of the 122.
Of the 122, 1.75, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, it just wasn't...
No. What White's proposal does is it ensures us that we can complete everything that we committed to the community through the referendum process within budget. By entering into a GMAX contract, White essentially carries the risk of the budget after the point that we enter into an agreement with them. On top of that, it already adds in scope that's been identified through the design process over the last six months, including a second-floor fine arts, or a second-floor addition on top of the fine arts addition at South that will be used for additional classrooms, likely science as part of that, an additional theater classroom at South, renovation of the administrative suite for counseling support services and deans at North, so that that suite is more accessible off of the commons than we currently have. We realized that that was a necessity as part of the design process. And all of the requested changes in the southeast corner of North, which were extensive changes since, over the design process, including a third-floor outdoor science learning patio on the third-floor roof, adding some square footage of outside learning space with, that North desperately needs due to the small footprint of that campus. White's proposal ensures that today, at the end of the project, we'll get everything that we had planned for and more than what was proposed to the community through the master facility plan. We, as a committee, and I believe that White offers a high level of efficiency through the design-build model that they offer, where one company is responsible for working alongside us for the completion of the project. It also makes sure that any concerns with either the design or build, we know which company is responsible for those concerns. It would be White. After we went through the committee process, I performed a reference check of White with schools completing similar-sized projects, and they received high praise for the work that they have done. We also executed a similar project this last summer with air conditioning, and our team was very happy with how that project went, and at the end, money came back to us as a result of that GMAX contract that have already been reinvested into things like security upgrades at each of the schools. So in the end, coming out of the committee, I am confident recommending White as our construction manager, and under action tonight, we're asking the board to approve for the administration to negotiate and execute a guaranteed maximum contract for construction manager services within the established master facility plan budget with White and Company. So with that lead-in, I'll first turn it over to Mike and Don if there's anything that they wanted to add since they were part of that committee. I'll turn it over to the board for any questions. Go ahead. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, the only concern that I had with dealing with White was the fact that we're looking at that one company, so when we see a benefit there, I also had a concern in terms of checks and balances, this sort of thing, right? And it turns out, as part of this process, there's going to be another company involved in doing some inspection work while the construction's going on, so we're going to get that third-party look at, and as well, expertise of our, of our own people here on staff, being able to look over that work, I think, is enough to overcome those sorts of concerns. There's also a tremendous track record that we have with White for the last, not just the air conditioning project, but things we've done for several years since. And a huge investment in terms of personal interest, the caring that we're going to get from, from that staff, there are so many people at White that are currently in district that this is, you know, we have, we have sort of a, an insurance in a way that, that work is going to be done really well, because if it's not, there's nowhere to hide. I mean, these are, you know, there's so many people living right here in our district, and having, having children going to school here as well, there's, there's just a lot of personal motivation, I think, on behalf of the people, not just the company, but the people involved, to really do right by us here. There's also the added plus of us hiring somebody to do all this work that's inside District 99. So we're, you know, this, this is money getting spent with a company that is benefiting, benefiting our community economically. So, so I think that's a, that's another plus. The pluses that we get with this, with White were just too hard to ignore. Getting the additional things that Hank mentioned as part of this project, it's a dream come true. We, we didn't expect to be able to get there, I don't think, going into this process. We would, we would be able to get, we hoped, but it wasn't something we expect. We had what we owed our constituents, and, and this is going beyond that. Plus, the, the fee to, to perform the services was, that was very highly competitive, 1.75 percent is definitely below industry norm for this type of work. So, so that was a major plus. And I think it spoke to White's, you know, sincere interest in doing this project. I mean, this, I think it means a lot to them, I think that they stand to gain a lot from doing this project really well, so it's going to reflect nicely on them, reflects nicely on us, it's a win-win situation. I'm, I'm highly satisfied this is the right decision for, for our district.
I just have a question before. The third-party oversight that will be still orchestrated through White? Totally independent?
It's actually through the ROE, it's totally independent.
Okay.
Regional Office of Education that comes and does a code review, is a final check on.
And we've, we've had some preliminary discussion about the idea of possibly, you know, even employing somebody else to add an additional layer of oversight, if we feel it's needed, and that's something we can have some additional conversation about as, as things go along. But, because I actually had that experience personally. I was, several years ago, I served as an architect just doing inspection work for a charter school in Michigan, K through 12, that had a design-build company, put the, you know, design it and build the school, and they had to bring in a third party to look at things and say, yes, this is okay, approve the payments, this sort of thing. So it's good that our ROE automatically has that built in, and I think that's why, and that, I don't think, that's exactly why I ended up serving this role in, in this project I did in Michigan several, several years ago. So, so I think we're, I think we're going to be in good shape with this.
I don't know that I can really improve upon what Hank and Mike have already offered. I guess I'll just briefly state that we, we had a problem on the committee, and it was a good problem, we had two fantastic companies to choose from.
Yeah.
And it was a... And it was very difficult to reach a conclusion, I think. And I'm not sure we would have made a wrong choice either way. But at the end of the day, we had a company who was extremely motivated for this job. It was very evident in their presentation, their proposal. And at the end of the day, we're going to be able to promise to the community that we're going to be able to meet all of the goals and expectations of the master facility plan, under a guaranteed maximum contract that's going to fit our budget. It was just too hard to pass up at the end of the day, and that's why I was comfortable in making a recommendation to go with White.
Any other questions?
So my only question, so it's not about the White selection. Sounds like the committee did their job, did their due diligence, agree with everything you said, agree with that. We talk about enhancements to what we talked about with the community. We talk about additions to the plan. Have we also considered, are those enhancements and additions needed? Would we be better off? Or have we considered looking at minimizing the tax impact to the community and actually not borrowing as much money?
Yeah, I think these are all absolutely needs that emerged as you went through the design and planning. I mean, these aren't wishes. These are things that really enhance and build on to our programming. And there's a whole list of classroom improvements beyond this that we still have in Hopper. We still have about $9 to $10 million worth of other improvements.
Well, I mean, even when this project is done, there's going to be a list of improvements we need. But to be responsible to the taxpayers, we told them this is what we want. If we can get what we told them we wanted for less, we need to at least consider not borrowing that additional money and going beyond what we said we were going to do to minimize that tax impact. I just think it's something we need to think about and something we need to consider.
I'll throw in a little bit from the committee. I mean, part of it is the swing space. By putting in permanent structures that we can keep, to me, there's a lot more value in that, rather than putting mobile trailers out there and making the kids go out of the buildings to do that. So part of it was, that's part of what this new scope is, we're actually getting some more classrooms in the project that we benefited in. It was really part of the process of talking about phasing. So having that swing space, we're going to be building the new stuff first, putting kids in a solid building as opposed to those trailers. To me, that is just wasted money. So it's just more effectively using the money and getting something out of it. So it's not just like, oh, we got another wish and let's take this. But it's things that when we identified through the process, when we were trying to get the parity of the two schools, we started saying, well, we're either going to leave one down or what we're going to do, we brought them up closer. So most of those are last additions, I think, were based on parity discussions between the two camps.
As well said.
This is a big problem.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, if we do this in the future, because those are things that we need, it's going to cost us twice as much. So that's not a savings to the community at all. In fact, it's costing us more. So, you know.
I'm just saying, if these are things that we didn't expressly put out to the community that they voted on, we need to at least consider, is this money we should spend? So if it wasn't on the list, when we voted on that.
Because you got it.
Yeah, just because we have it, just because you have a shiny toy and you have 136 million doesn't mean you have to spend it. If we can get everything we promised to the committee for, and I don't know the numbers, so if we can get everything we promised to the community for 132, why wouldn't we return that $4 million to the community?
So let me give you a couple points for this. Approach it a little bit from the architectural angle, okay? When we went to the community, we went to the community with very preliminary, general sort of scope of, here are the things we want to accomplish, right? What's happened in the last several weeks and months is a refinement of those designs. And as you work through those things, you discover what it's going to take to really get those things done. And unfortunately, we, you know, for instance, say the extra theater classroom at South, okay? That's something that, you know, in talking with a group designing that space, it became, I mean, I heard from a few people, hey, this really doesn't work all that well if we don't get this theater classroom. I mean, it means more compromise than what's happening. And that wasn't the intent going in. But you go in with, here's this sort of general idea of what we want to try to accomplish. And we explain that to the community, and we get a budget put to that, based on, you know, our architect taking a look at what current prices are and such, and says, okay, here's a budget that we'd recommend for you to accomplish these things. Then you start drilling down into what it actually takes to get things done. We were afraid, I mean, so I would say to you that the things that are being added that seem to be above and beyond actually really aren't. They really are things, I mean, even the patios, the outdoor patios at North, the exterior learning spaces, those were conceived of in the original plan. And if you look at some of the schematics and some of the things we're talking about, I think early on, we did talk about doing those kinds of things. But we didn't know whether or not it was going to fit in the budget. So what we're finding now is that we've been able to, you know, to negotiate a great deal to get these things, to really make what we planned, the community, work really, really well, such that we don't have to do what maybe Terry was just mentioning, or something that, you know, we wouldn't have to do going forward out of general funds, trying to get little things done after this is all over to make it even work, you know, to make it work right.
With all being said, Dan, I totally understand your perspective. There's one more piece I'd like to add to it, and then I'm going to offer kind of a When I showed up in the district and we started talking, and I started understanding the master facility plan and then informing the community about it, we're dealing off of concepts around teaching, learning in our buildings that were from 2011 when the master facility plan was first designed. We're eight years later. So needs have changed, instructions change, our buildings have changed. So that's why we went through that big design process. I think the plan that's sitting in front of you that's within the referendum would reflect exactly what we need at this point. Now, I still anticipate that there are going to be savings within this Gmax contract in bidding and construction. And when those dollars come back off, I think it's absolutely appropriate to come back to the board and say, what do you want us to do with those savings? Would you like us to abate them, or would you like us to?
Right. And I wasn't saying I wouldn't vote for this, or I'm not opposed to this. I just want to make sure that we take that into consideration.
Of course.
With this entire process, that that is an option for this sort of things.
That we see now is to be expected within the natural design process. But any savings that we capture back from here on out, I would definitely think it's appropriate to come back to the board and say, you know, we've saved $750,000 on phase one of the project. Would you like us to reinvest that into these things? Or would you like us to not borrow that additional $750,000? I think that's absolutely appropriate.
Thank you. That clarification helps.
Yeah, and we have not sold $136 million worth of bonds. You know, we'll be making these decisions along the way. And there's going to be opportunity, that's what I was going to say, to follow Mike's. But wouldn't you agree too, Mike, that some of these are just sort of contiguous spaces that are touching existing promises, that, you know, it makes sense from an efficiency standpoint to finish those spaces, like the second floor of the archway at South, the outdoor spaces at the southeast corner of North. It just makes sense. And if we can accomplish what we perceive to be needs within those contiguous spaces within the budget that was promised to the community, you're accomplishing some efficiencies.
Good. I think we're drilling down too on, you know, as we met with these different construction managers, talking about timeline, you know, looking for efficiencies, the quicker that this work can get done, the less it's going to cost as well. And that's, and I think, you know, we're all interested in that as well, save the taxpayers some money that way. Less money we spend on interest. I know Mark is looking in, you know, to when we release the bonds, you know, we've heard from him about that as well, trying to be really fiscally responsible here, keep the costs to a minimum. And so looking at interest rates is an important consideration in all this as well. But point well taken, right?
And anything that goes beyond this initial scope that we've talked about through this design should definitely come back to the board to see if the board approves that, or, right, abate that, or don't issue that debt or abate it.
Don really nailed it, you know, with what you just said. Seriously, the things that we're talking about here are things that are all touching the things that we're doing. So it's not like we're coming up with, okay, now we can do this other thing on the other side of the school that, you know, we're going to do something on the north side of North High, or do something with a fieldhouse and all kinds of, we're not doing, that's not happening. These are things that are really natural outgrowths of the design process and the things that we're addressing. So I don't know that it's even really fair for us to say that these are additions to the scope. So anyhow.
I had two questions.
Yeah.
Completely different. In the listing of management fees, what's the timeframe that the salaries were generated under? Is it a year, two years, two and a half?
2021 is when we expect that the projects will be completed.
Starting when?
Now.
So it'd be a three-year window then?
Yep.
Now, my other question, completely different. And this may relate to Jim, or maybe if I went around a little bit longer. When they start to open up North, is there any inkling as far as asbestos? I see that's not covered.
Yes, there is.
There is. We anticipate it, yeah.
Has anybody estimated the cost of that? Just ballpark as far?
We've allocated and believed, we've held aside $300,000 of contingency, but there's a larger contingency of about $10 million for any of these kinds of.
I'm guessing more North than South because of so much.
We'll get us both.
You start.
We'll have it both.
So.
The 50s, right?
Sure. Seal and tiles.
I guess, all of a sudden, doors, box, and open up.
Jim, you've given explanation of our contingencies built within the contract and how they're allocated between design and construction, both at North and South. That might help the board to understand Rick's questions.
My second question is then also, since we have done work at both universities, I posed a comment. It's an HF, I know exactly what you're talking about. The high school, is there anything as far as unsuitable foundation soil where they start building the new audit farm, all of a sudden now we have to do stuff that we didn't plan?
Yep.
I know we've done construction around the schools 20, 40 years ago, but I'm sure the laws have changed in regards to what we cannot put on. Is it, you know, I'm just saying, is it like bedrock, clay, is it a marsh as you go down?
We've already been doing soil boring and soil testing, and everything has come back clean so far.
So I know that's not included at all, so there's another, all of a sudden now we got a.
That's less of a risk, I think, because that's where we did.
That's what I was really concerned about.
Don's recommendation.
So the set aside is $5 million for design contingencies. So you get into, you open up a wall and, uh-oh, nothing is where we expected it to be, and now the architects have to go back, literally, to the drawing board. There's $5 million allocated for that, and then there's $5 million allocated for construction contingencies for same thing. Something goes wrong, we need to do more building than we expected in an area, that's in there. There's also, within that Gmax contract, there's contingencies built in for inflationary costs as well. So anywhere that we get better pricing than what we're estimating at this point, that all three of those things are dollars that could roll back to us through, because we recapture all those savings in a Gmax contract. But then, we could go to the conversation we had before, do we use that for additional building projects, or do we not issue bonds, or do we abate taxes?
Since it's allocated for that, it shouldn't be then, say, oh, we didn't feel.
Right. We would come back to the board and discuss that. Absolutely.
But as far as out of the gate, you're not expecting drastic.
I'll be honest, the unsuitable soils right now are impressive. That means we're clean. That means we're not taking offsite soils that aren't.
Or maybe a spill 40 years ago that happened in the maintenance area that, you know, you got PCVs.
That's, everything's come back.
We're good on that. At North, where the courtyard is, I'll be perfectly honest, we're a little worried about how soft that is. But I don't foresee that being a huge cost to secure and structurally make that base anymore. So that's not a big cost. And it's going to be, it is what it is on that one.
Right.
But I don't foresee that being huge, nowhere near these 10% contingencies. The asbestos, until we really dig into the design to the level where we know what wall we're taking out, we know what wall we're taking out in exact areas, and then get estimates from companies, I don't foresee that being huge either, but there will be cost there. On the contingency piece, remember that I'm involved in every change order and everything that's going on out there. So every time that we see unforeseen, or we need something different in a particular building that needs to be a change above and beyond, I'm giving that the okay.
I have no problem with that.
I don't think the 10% is anywhere near what we're going to need in asbestos.
And what about asbestos with that delay? So you took care of it, would that delay any production?
No, not, as soon as we know phase one, we're going to have the asbestos piece down and know exactly when we're going to.
Rick, for example, this summer, as we started the air conditioning project at North, we ran into it, and they had to treat that, even though we were on such a tight timeframe, we still delivered, first day school, air conditioning was up and running. So they're used to running.
I just thought that that wasn't included, so I wanted to ask.
Great question.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, here you go. Thank you, gentlemen, for everything. Thank you all. Move on to the insurance.
I'm going to turn this one over to Mark.
This is just a quick update. In April, we, I brought to you an update for the insurance, and I think Tony's going to put it up here. So there's really three columns of information about what we were paying for the last year's plan. And because it was already kind of a complicated situation to go from a fiscal year and at the end of August to a calendar year basis, we tried to keep the premiums very simple and unchanged for what we call the crossover period or conversion period. So this last few months through the end of this calendar year, we kept the rates the same as what we had last year. But we did have some, in that April memo, mentioned some increases that we were going to do for the next calendar year. And so those are here in the green shaded column for 2019. We aren't making any changes in the PPO premiums. The insurance committee has really worked hard. And what we did is we were making some out-of-plan costs, so if you're out of network, if you're not using a network surgeon or hospital or facility, we increased those out-of-pocket amounts. So that's the only change we had to make, really, to keep the plan without any change in premium. And we looked at the claim history since April. We had one or two high months, but we've had some really good low months. Overall, the PPO plans are in the, you know, the 92 to 93% of what we expected, so they're running below cost. So, and that's where we thought they would be going to this next year. So we're going to be able to keep that same premium level going for the whole next year. If you can slide it up, down there with the HMOs, those are plans that we purchased basically from Blue Cross. We don't really have a say in the plan design so much, and for the premium, they just pass that along to us because we purchase those. It's a regular insurance plan. Those are going to go up by 4%. We have a small vision plan. I think maybe 200 employees overall are in that plan. There's no board cost or board sharing with that. It's just basically a discounted vision. So you go to certain providers and you get a discount, and it's relatively inexpensive. But those are going to go up 6%. Again, that's a two-year guarantee. They can go up 6% and they'll keep that increase for the next year. And then the PPOs for the dental plans, again, actually, both the PPO and the HMO plan for the dental are going to go up 5.2%. That's what we were told they would do that in April, and that's what we told you would happen. We're just reporting to you, letting you know, everything kind of went the way we expected, and we're already to do an open enrollment for a new calendar year base plan.
What's the Max Dental?
Pardon?
What's the Max Dental with hard benefits received?
Max Dental?
Yeah, like the 2,000 or 2,000.
Oh, I don't think there's, I don't think there is a, well, you know what? I don't know. I don't know. There probably is a cap, certainly on the HMO. But I don't think I'm cheap yet. Yeah, I can get to that. He's talking about total amount that the plan will pay for dental.
Yeah. Does it cap up?
Yeah. I don't think the HMO does, I mean, the people. I, I don't think the HMO does, I mean, the PPO does, but it could.
The PPO at the time sure does.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is an action item, it'll become a.
Any other questions? Okay, the ESSA report?
All right. ESSA is back.
ESSA is back.
Along with ESSA comes a new Illinois school report card, which is interesting. Today Gina and I, for the first time saw, believe maybe the preview of it, but we're told that it may change still. So we're, we're not sharing with anybody yet what that looks like. We did find out today that we'll be able to inform the board and our internal staff of what's on that school report card on October 30th, the day before it goes live on the 31st.
Trick or treat.
Trick or treat. So what Gina and I wanted to do tonight was revisit, ISB's done a nice job, though, of putting out some infographics and some, I've shared some of these with the board before, but I just wanted to go, have us go through a couple of these things today. One is the multiple indicators. Could you go to the other one, Tony? If you'll scroll down, Tony, to high school. Remember, this is what Gina went through last year. We went through board meeting by board meeting, and we tackled a little, each one of these slivers that's up there and talked about what it meant for us, what our data looks like, what we're predicting it will mean, when this all comes together. You'll see some of these, as we said, are still pending, so if you get down to six, you see there's very descriptive information, 7.5 for this year, but less than that three years from now. What less than means, we, we just know less than 7.5. Because that goes along with 10, some of the chronic absenteeism numbers are offset then by fine arts participation. And we don't know how those numbers happen or work, or if the board gets to decide, or the state gets to decide, we're still waiting to hear on that. But you'll see, there's some fluctuation that we'll be informing the board about over the next couple of years of how this works. Anything on there, jump out that concerns you, or you have a question about that Gina and I could answer?
What's the climate survey?
The climate survey is the five essentials survey.
Oh, yeah.
We have given, traditionally, every other year, there's an off year, but I believe now it's gonna be every year.
It's annual, and typically given in like November, December, that timeframe. We haven't set a date for this year, and it's for parents, students, and staff.
Gina, is that science proficient? Is that the biology test they give?
No.
So fresh, I mean. Have you heard, is that gonna change topic? Have you heard next year?
The test is gonna change?
Which, the chemistry or physics or?
No, I have not heard that. As far as I know, what remains, I mean, I haven't heard it's gonna change, so.
Okay. I'll just scroll down then, Tony. So I've shared this with the board as well, you can kind of go through and see how it's weighted, how the math works. This is getting into the weeds a little bit, but just so if you wanted to dig a little bit deeper, it kind of plays out how the math is gonna work. We'd wanna look at that 912 column, that's for us, how the actual calculation is going to occur. So, you know, we, we've seen some preliminary numbers, but we've also been told that they're not correct. So we're not gonna share anything until really the 30th.
That's correct.
31st. Out of that, all of those numbers, Tony, if you go to the other document, what happens is we end up in really four designations. Okay, and you can see what these ones are. So to be an exemplary school, you'd have to, they're going to compare all the school, high schools in the state against one another, and where your final number comes out. If you're in the top 10%, and you have to have a graduation rate higher than 67%, and you have no underperforming student groups below the all students group in the lowest 5% of schools. So in other words, they compare you to the top schools, and you gotta be in that top 10%, but none of your students can match the numbers of the bottom 5%. Okay? And you gotta meet the graduation requirement. Then you would be exemplary. You can see, like, one change in one school's numbers cascades through, this is part of the reason why we're not seeing our numbers yet, they're giving a lot of preliminary information. Because if a school picks up that something's wrong, then it goes back and changes all the calculations, the curve is redrawn, and then everybody is reseated.
Right.
So, and then you can see each of these stacks very similarly. So then commendable, you're now, you're not in the top 10% of all schools, but you still have the graduation requirement, but you're not grouped in the lowest 5%. This is where the majority of schools across the state will be, will be commendable. And then as you move into the bottom, you start ending up with, you have groups dropping into that 5% range to get to underperforming or lowest performing. Part of the key things of these designations, if you see the little, like, little power button that's there, where it says eligible to apply to serve as an Illinois Power Learning Partner. If you're in those top two groups, you can apply to be a school that's an exemplary school. Well, it's not the exemplary rating, but you're an exemplary school that other schools could go to for resources, to learn from you as to what you're doing so well, to be in one of those top two groups. And if you're in the bottom one, you can receive funding to work with one of those top schools and learn and improve from them. The claim is that these ratings are just to help us learn from each other.
Yeah.
You know, that's not how this works.
No.
But, but that's kind of the intent. Gina, anything I missed?
Wow.
I'm doing good, I've learned of this.
Very good. Especially like risk adjustments, so underperforming, if you look at this two groups who are underperforming, there, there, there's a lot of people at disadvantages, like English learners and whatever, that are, we know historically are gonna bring you down anyway, so.
You're allowed to be lower, just not in the bottom 5%. If you slide into the bottom 5% of the state in any of those, you're no longer commendable.
Refresh my memory, how many high schools are there in Illinois?
There's 850 school districts in Illinois. I don't know how many high schools off the top.
So let's say there's 850, so the top 10% could be 85.
Well, there's more, there's gonna be more than that.
More?
There's 850 school districts, there's gonna be more, more high schools.
I think I looked, I looked through 2014, 15, there were like 700 and so.
Makes sense. There's a lot of school districts.
Oh, there's a lot of.
K-12, K-8.
Right, some are just K-8.
Yeah, but that makes up for us, we've got two high schools, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but even in our community, there's.
Let's just say.
There's four elementary school districts.
Right.
One high school district with two high schools, so.
But on average, you know, those schools that have four, or, you know, whatever, but, okay, so we're talking 85 probably in the top. And then.
42 in the bottom.
Yeah. I, I'm curious, and all this will, you know, come out of the wash, about that whole 5%, how those numbers will match, and start to get the real numbers. Yeah. And if these will weigh out to be what they were expecting, based on, you know, the thing, I mean, because I figure some schools already have, where it's a lot of each time, kind of being the same schools based on this idea, yeah. Yeah, so I, yeah, I know it all, we'll learn soon enough, right?
Come the next month.
Yeah. Well, it just is mind boggling, you know. Why fine arts? Why couldn't it be science? Why couldn't it be math?
There is a science and a math component inside of there.
Yeah.
Up at the top, down at the bottom is where the, the fine arts is. I, I do think overall this is better than the one test takes all.
Yeah.
That we used to have, right? This is, this is definitely a move in the right direction. It measures more of the student experience, it puts more weight towards things like graduation, ninth grade on track, things that we should be measured by as high schools that are true measurements. It gives credit for GPA, which we know is the most reliable predictor of post-secondary success. So there, there is a lot of good aspects of this, but is, there is with any kind of grading or accountability, just as our kids in our classrooms will tell us, not everything's fair, we're gonna feel the same way about certain aspects of this as a school district. I think we're gonna have to see how it plays out, but I do think it's better than it was.
We'll wait and see.
So a little bit of, little bit of information on what's coming.
It'll be a very interesting report.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
And have we had, any, anything else on ESSA?
No, that's it.
Okay. Have we got any freedom of information?
Responded to.
Responded to. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, let me start by asking if there's any, any items that any member of the board wishes to extract. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes personnel report, appointment classified, personnel report, retirement certified, retirement exempt, retirement classified, financial aid, student tour, and acceptance of donation, discomplaining education foundation grants, which we are very appreciative of.
Yes, I move that we accept this, the consent agenda.
Second.
Dan seconds.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca? Aye. Consent agenda passes, and once again, thank you to the foundation for all of your good work.
They will be attending a future reporting for present.
Yes, I think they're planning on it, on the 19th, the 19th.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yep.
Okay, so we have recommendations for action, and we have a motion for us to approve, for the Board of Education to approve benefit plan, benefit plan premiums for the, say it, for the 2019 calendar years presented on the document entitled Recommended Medical Dental and Vision Plan premiums for calendar year 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca?
Aye, motion carries, and then the other item on recommendation for action is approval of construction manager. Do you gentlemen want to?
Sure, I recommend the Board of Education approve the administration to negotiate and execute a guaranteed maximum contract for construction manager services within the established master facility plan budget with White and Company.
Second.
We'll give it to Doc, he did all the work.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca?
Aye, motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, White, also, thank you.
Yes, now you need to do a good job. That's right, that's right, please.
I thought you had no pressure, but there's a lot.
Okay, we have a policy committee report?
Yes, this, these are two policies up for first reading, we have a policy committee meeting this evening. The first one is just bringing in some recommended policy language, which will help us in our bond rating for issuing bonds. The second one is updating some of our FMLA language to make sure our policy matches federal law and current practice. I'll turn it over to Dan and Rick, if they had anything to add to that from tonight?
No, most of the, most of the language in the policy 4.4, which is essentially making the language around incurring debt more robust, is press language that's been in footnotes that we just haven't included in policy. And it really, it seems it really set us up to be able to get the best rates possible moving forward.
So you're saying that these were, these were actually in footnotes, because what I read was that there were things.
Level additions to it, they were just adding some things like, it's common sense things that we would, that we need to be in policy, but it's called window dressing a little bit, that we're putting a very inclusive policy together, so that when Standard and Forbes looks at us and looks at our debt policy, they'll see that it's comprehensive and that we, you know.
My takeaway from this was your, your, I think, I assume this was your commentary, some of this was your commentary, the idea that by doing this, it, it actually, as you were saying, puts in place, you know, practice, it puts in words what we're, what we're actually doing, and that this makes us more attractive to these bond agencies, which results potentially in better rates for the district.
What they'll do is they'll probably give us a stronger management credit on that when we do that, which investors look for.
And it doesn't change the, the board's approval mechanisms.
We're gonna go back and change whatever we wanna change.
Sure.
At this point, we're not.
Well, I just, I wanna say thank you for doing this, though, 'cause I mean, once again, it's something, but if anything that makes us, makes it look, you know, communicates to everybody else how well we're doing what we're doing, so that we can receive the benefit of that, and, and, you know, it saves us all money, that's, that's, that's great. Right, no, it's, well, that's what, yeah. So the other piece of this is when we do these things, I forget, what mechanism do we have for keeping track of the things that are kind of a little off from just the, the standard press, so that we can, we?
Question, Mike, we have a running list that we made last year at the board's request of any policy that falls outside of the scope of press, and then we are going to revisit that each year with the policy, a certain number of them each year with the policy, and make sure that they get reviewed. So now we have that list. Last year, we reviewed every single one that fell outside, and now we'll just start bringing some back. Every time that a press, a press update comes with the related policy, we'll then roll that back through.
That's awesome, yeah. I mean, we, Nancy and I and others, we went through several years of, you know, non-standard policies, getting it, you know, getting it to a point where it was standards of care that, you know, easily, so as long as we, we just wanna make sure we don't stray from, from that, and, and we're able to keep track of those changes, so that's what you're doing. I thank you, thank you for that good work.
Not the full overview of.
Yes.
Over the course of, like, how many years to do a full policy?
I think it's only like two, because there's not that many that are on.
Yeah.
It's half a dozen or so that are on that list.
Very manageable.
Speaking of that, though, something else came up in policy that'll be coming back later as action, so I'll mention it now, because the next month, if you have any concerns about either of these policies or the next thing I'm going to talk about, please reach out to either Dan, Rick, or myself. One of the other things that'll be coming forward under a compliance review is that within our board policies, last year, there's a recommendation from our legal group was to take anywhere in a policy where it referenced a staff member and direct them to the website to find the current staff member that's responsible for that part of the policy. Because it's a lot easier for us to update anything about a contact information on the website than it is a policy, because it takes two months to update a policy. Well, we've just got a compliance review from the federal government that conflicts with the state government, so, shock. The federal government is saying that all of those names need to be, and contact information must be inside the policies.
Really?
Yeah. So we're gonna add them back in, but we're going to come back to the board with an action item. We're gonna work with legal to get the language, but an action item that allows the administration to update contact information within board policies without going to the board for approval. So we're gonna get an action item that limits the scope to that, so that at any point they change. scope to that, so that at any point they change, we'll just go in.
Name of the number.
Phone number, address. There's, there's some key email address, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
So, we'll work with legal to get what that is, but I wanted you to know that that's coming as an action item related to policy in the future. So, if you have any concerns about that between column, you know, reach back out as well. So, that's it. Now, policy.
Anything else on the policy? Okay, this is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to the district. Does anybody on the address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to communication announcements. Report on Legislative Education Network of DuPage.
We did have the annual Lend breakfast, at which time Mark attended with me as well. There was a presentation about how we came about our pension crisis in Illinois and how we go about fixing it. It was dire and bleak, depressing. And I think the, the sole recommendation, recommendation for course of action would be a constitutional amendment, which I'm not sure there's a lot of political capital moving in that direction.
We'll go back in time and have a legislature page to build on teachers and administrators have.
Jump in the Wayback Machine. Perfect. So, not a lot of optimism in that, in that presentation. Mark, you can chime in if you'd like, but pension reform is definitely on the docket of the legislature. Lend is on top of that. We'll be meeting in November, November 9th, to discuss current legislation that's being proposed in connection with pension funding shift. So, that will definitely be on the docket, and I'll be reporting and updating you as we proceed this upcoming year.
Report on School Association for, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying that's...
Oh, report on School Association for Special Education, DuPage County, SASID. I haven't been attending meetings. Terry hasn't been able to make the meeting. I did review the minutes from the SASID executive director, and things are just going along, so.
And they're still interviewing with...
Still interviewing candidates. Our report on District 99 Education Foundation?
Well, I, we voted on what we discussed in our last meeting, and you see, we, we gave away some money for teacher grants.
Almost $8,000.
And, so, that's a good thing, and we're still accepting applications for more teacher grants. So, teachers, be sure and apply if you have something. And, that's about it.
Things are shaping up for Pizza Wars?
Well, yes, it's still gonna be that, that Thursday night before, what is it, the four-day weekend that we have coming up? I think it's March.
It's the first week in March, right?
March 1st, I think, or, it's a Thursday, so.
And all those, those events take a lot of pre-planning and...
Well, we, we tabled that to do the grants this time. So, our next meeting will be strictly...
Time to roll. Got it?
Pizza Wars. But, we have all of our pizza vendors ready.
They're already committed. That's awesome.
And it won't be right before midterms or finals, so it'll be great.
Yes. Yes.
Association of School Boards, Mike?
Ah, yeah, well, so, speaking of the year kinda going along, we're already only a month away from the triple I, which is hard to believe. But, one of the, one of the things that'll be considered, as it is every year, is the resolutions. So, you should have a copy. I have not had a chance to peruse this yet, but if, if everybody can kinda just take a quick look, I'll go through too, and maybe at our next meeting, highlight a couple things that I see in here. But, if there's anything that, that concerns you, or you think that I ought to say something about, let me know, because I...
We're gonna talk about that. I think there is a couple.
Okay. Well, why don't you...
On the agenda for the 12th?
I think that's right, yeah. Yeah, November 12th.
I'll send you that document again digitally.
Okay. All right, well, you know, let me know, just, I mean, go ahead and just email me or something, too. I appreciate the highlight of that, so that I can maybe dig into it a little bit in advance as well.
There is a key one there on student safety. The first, like, three pages of it focus on student safety. So, dig into that one. I imagine, Mike, you're gonna spend a lot of time discussing that.
I imagine, yeah. So, yeah, so, and then hopefully, let's see, I think Julie had sent out an email ahead of time, too, just asking people if they were going to do any of the pre-conference workshop things. So, if you are, let, let her know. And, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we have some upcoming board meetings. November 12th, the special workshop meeting at 6:30. That will be at South High in the cafeteria.
No, we're actually gonna meet in the library.
In the library, okay.
Okay.
So, it's the other, the other entrance?
Yeah.
And then, November 19th, we'll have the regular business meeting here at the Administrative Services Center at 6:30. Right now, we need a motion to go into closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Terry moves, Mike seconds.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Cavanado?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Rick, Nancy Cupca?
Aye. We will be going into closed session. We will, when we return from closed session, we will not be voting on anything in open session, so.